Good afternoon, I'd like to call the June 21st meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Wages?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors, Ms. Leece.
We have one visitor this evening, Roberta Eva Slage.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sobchak.
Thanks Chair Cook. I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Larson, Barbara.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Sobchak. We received some great news recently that our Information Services Branch placed fourth in the digital community college survey within the large colleges category division for schools with 10,000 students or more. And I want to thank Tom Pagano and all staff because I know that this was a very onerous application process and I'm very proud of us. And I believe that Tom is going to come and say a few words and accept the award on our behalf.
I just wanted to echo Barbara's comments there and acknowledge the staff here. This is a survey that's done once a year and basically this certifying organization looks at all community colleges across the United States accredited community colleges and technical schools. So we placed fourth in the large school division, which means that that category is for student, 10,000 students and over. And I will tell you that this survey is intense. It's about 35-plus pages with about 105 or more questions, at least 30 percent of which have extremely, extremely intense text boxes with about eight-point font. And so you have to be creative, not just in terms of making sure you've checked the right boxes, but you use a lot of words. And those words, I guess I want to underscore that those words are not about the technology itself, it's about how you use the technology. And that's really why I think we should be very proud of this award because it's not about just buying the gadgets, it's about how you deploy and use the gadgets. So I want to acknowledge all the directors that are NIS, all their managers, particularly Sandra Warner, because she really did actually kind of assign the, her to making sure that everybody was doing their parts. And she actually typed a lot of this in. And I must say, that was a lot of effort over multiple weekends and evenings, and it was happening during the holiday season. I was almost reluctant to assign this because I really thought it was going to affect people's vacations, but they came through. Of course, they know fourth is just not good enough, so we're going to hit it again next year if we can in any way. So we're very proud and I wanted to say thanks to the whole department for their support and so on, and you for acknowledging it.
Tom, congratulations and to you and the entire team. We really appreciate the great work that the department does. If you went to the Royals game last night, I think the first 2,500 fans received a high-resolution box of some kind. I don't know the terminology obviously, and I don't know if it was three-dimensional, but I apologize that your award isn't in three-dimensional high-resolution that you can put a screen on this evening award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item is the open forum. The open forum is an agenda item. At each regularly scheduled board meeting, speakers must register by completing the registration form prior to the open forum agenda item, giving his name or her name, city of residence, name of the group he or she is representing, the topic, and a brief one or two sentence summary for the presentation. I'll abort from the rest of the discussion because we have no registered speakers tonight, so the open forum is hereby closed. College lobbyist report, we do not have a report tonight. I believe that, I would say though, that each of us are awaiting, as many people in the state are, what the Kansas Supreme Court's decision will be with K through 12. And I believe that decision is due to come down by June 30th, so the clock is ticking on that. But there is no lobbyist report unless anybody has a question or comment. Community reports and recommendations, first is the audit. The audit minutes are in your packet. We discussed that audit report at the May meeting. The minutes weren't available for the board packet, so those minutes are there for your information. And that moves us to human resources, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Resources Committee met at 9:30 a.m. on Monday, June 4th, in the Robert Lytle Conference Room. Trustee Lawson and I were there along with several members of the cabinet. There were several recommendations that came forth from that meeting, including benefit renewals and recommendations. Mr. Jerry Zimmerman reviewed the following recommendations to be presented to the Board of Trustees for approval at the June board meeting here. With respect to the college's 403B plan, effective July 1, 1978, the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of the college's plan, and the plan has subsequently been amended from time to time for administrative and regulatory changes. So on November 1st, 2017, the administration of the plan was changed from a multiple vendor record-keeping model to a sole record-keeping vendor. And as a result, it is necessary to amend and restate the plan document to reflect this change throughout. So therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the Human Resources Committee's recommendation that the board accept the college administration's recommendation to approve and adopt the form of the recommend of the amended JCC college 403B plan effective January 1, 2018, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, the Human Resource Committee also recommends that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to approve and adopt the form of the amended JCC 457B Tax-deferred Retirement Plan effective January 1, 2018, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On February 16, 2017, Mr. Chair, the Board of Trustees also approved the establishment of an annual contract with Two West Capital Advisors LLC for investment advisory services for an initial term of one year, with an option to renew for an additional four years in one-year increments upon the approval of both parties. And this is up for renewal with respect to the July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019 period, the second year of the contract, and represents no change to the annual fee provisions. The annual fee for the services covered under this agreement are payable by TIAA from the revenue credit accounts created by the college 403B plan and the college's tax-deferred retirement plan. Therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the Human Resources Committee, the recommendation of the committee, that the Board of Trustees accepts college administration's recommendation to authorize the administration to review, to renew the contract for the provision of investment advisory services with Two West Capital Advisors LLC for the period beginning July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, at a total expenditure not to exceed $50,000, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Trustee Musel.
I apologize for not asking this before the meeting because I don't know if Dr. Larson, if this is yours, but who would handle, this is the first time we've had an investment advisor, if I remember right. Are we developing, have we developed some assessment or evaluation criteria to see whether, because we act like $50,000 is coming out of just, oh, it's just coming out of this stuff, but it's coming out of somebody's overall account. So how do we evaluate whether we're getting a better deal than when we did it ourselves?
Well, we had three, we actually had three record keepers prior to that. And so the funds, the fees that were being assigned to our employees, basically by having one, we were able to reduce those fees by more than a half overall. And so pretty much those monies go into a pool that pay them. But at some point, we're hoping to get to the point where basically we're not paying them at all. Basically, they're just making the money on people who are using them for investments.
So our employees are allowed to individually get advice from them on their investment of their?
Well, they come in and they talk to all of our employees, the same as TIAA, correct? They come in and talk to them too. So the employees can pick who they want to talk to, or they can talk to both of them if they want to. And so that's the way it's set up right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, I mean, Becky has an investment advisory committee.
Right.
That includes Jerry Zimmerman, Rachel Learz, and others that oversees that process.
Right. And we oversee just all of the investments and the choices that employees have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, there's also a number of policy updates and recommendations that were made by the administration and cabinet that you can see in pages five and six. It is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the following policies: copyrights and patents, equipment property checkout, loss of personal property, exit interview, and also to approve the deletion of the employee checkout policy as is shown subsequently in the board packet. Then I need to check with Vice President Larson real quick, did I read that correctly? We got to change here early this afternoon. Is that this one or the next one?
Is it this one or the next one?
I believe it's this one.
It's this one, I think.
You need to add the suspension, demotion, and termination policy was deleted as well.
And also to approve the deletion of the employee checkout policy as is shown subsequently in the board packet. I apologize, that's my fault.
I second that.
And so move.
Mary, did we capture that properly?
I think it's the suspension, demotion, and termination policy that was omitted from the board packet, so we need to...
Very good. Why don't I strike what I just said and I reread what you emailed me?
Okay, that'd be good. Why don't you do that for the record?
Therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the following policies: copyrights and patents, equipment property checkout, loss of personal property, exit interview and suspension, demotion and termination, and also to approve deletion of the employee checkout policy as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would so move. Mary Neera shaking her head, I agree.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, there are also a number of other policies, definitions, and purposes that are listed in the board packet. I believe that that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Learning quality, Trustee Snyder.
Thank you. The Learning Quality Committee met June 4th at 4:30. First, we received a sabbatical presentation by Jeanette Fenaro, I believe I'm saying that correctly, foreign language professor. She had a sabbatical in the fall of 2016 in Oaxaca, Mexico, and was really immersed in the culture and language, and seemed to be beneficial for her. Next, we had a presentation by the Office of Grants Leadership and Development, and they updated the committee on how we go about getting grants, what the process is, and the, what is on the horizon. One stat that they gave us was that the college had received $2.3 million in grant revenue in the current fiscal year, so that's always impressive. We received an update from the Small Business Development Center, providing an overview of the center's mission and some of their activities, and it's really an impressive asset the college has that I think all of us, if you haven't seen it before through one of these committees, is a great opportunity and something that I know we're trying to get out in the community because a lot of community members don't know what is available. We were presented affiliation agreements with Shawnee Mission Medical's Physicians Group to aid our nursing students, and articulation agreements with Shawnee Mission Blue Valley and Olafah School Districts to support the Degree in Three program. Details of that are in the packet if you're interested. James Hopper provided an overview of the Ed Affairs Committee and the purpose, enlightened us a bit of where they sit in the scheme of everything else, so that was beneficial. Lastly, we were presented with the upcoming year working agenda for the committee. It is substantially similar to the current working agenda, and the meeting adjourned at 5:50. I do have a recommendation to accept the working agenda, so formally the recommendation of Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2018-2019 Learning Quality Committee working agenda as it is shown in the board packet.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That would conclude my report unless Dr. Musel has anything.
Dr. Musel. That's an embarrassment to all the doctors on campus. Professor Fenaro's sabbatical report was excellent about living in homes and being immersed in the culture with people from all other campuses and other educators from around the hemisphere, really. And I also thought Dr. Hopper's report on Ed Affairs was helpful to remember what the role of the Ed Affairs Committee is, so it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Management, Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 6th, here in the boardroom. The information related to the Management Committee begins on page 26 and runs through page 55 of the board packet. The Management Committee received several presentations from staff. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on an agreement with the college's National Academy of Railroad Sciences, or NARS, with Spoon River College in Canton, Illinois. This agreement can be found in the consent agenda on page 80 of the board packet. Rachel Learz, Associate Vice President, Financial Services, and Chief Financial Officer, reported that the Board of Trustees approved the college's 2018-2019 management budget at its meeting on May 10, 2018. The approved budget has been loaded onto the college's accounting system in order to facilitate procurement of goods and services for the coming fiscal year. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the Sole Source Report as well as the summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. That summary is on page 30 of the board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, presented the Capital Infrastructure and Inventory and Replacement Plan. The plan is updated annually and helps guide the allocation of resources for preventative maintenance and preservation of building infrastructure. He then gave a monthly update on capital projects, and his report is on pages 48 and 49 of the board packet. He also reviewed the report on the financial status of facilities, master plan projects. That report is in your packet on page 50. We also received an overview of progress on the two buildings, the Career and Tech Ed Building and the Fine Arts and Design Studios Building, as well as the Gym refurbishment As this is the last month of the fiscal year, we have a number of recommendations, tend to be exact, to present this evening. In our first recommendation, Ms. Ally Scott, Accounting and Planning Coordinator, stated that Kansas statute requires that when a school district or community college publishes a legal notice in the newspaper, the newspaper must be one that is published at least weekly 50 times a year in the college's district. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the legal record, the Shawnee Dispatch, and the Tri-County News as official newspapers of the college, and that publication constitutes legal notice on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and I would make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Scott also made the second recommendation, and that was regarding the college's sponsors' selected events that helped the college maintain strong community relationships. To approve the above-listed sponsorships for the 2018-2019 fiscal year at a cost of $17,000 plus an additional $2,000 contingency for a total of $19,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. It's always difficult to please everyone that requests support. I have one question. I see that the Star Spangled Spectacular continues. Are they still receiving donations even though the Rotary Club no longer participates?
Trustee Musel brought that to our attention in the meeting, and the answer, the simple answer to the question is no, but we left that amount in there in case something else came up. Is that a fair assessment?
The city is taking the lead on that, and we do not know if they're going to seek contributions toward that or not. I think that's why it was left in there for this transition year.
Who is receiving it, then?
Well, nobody.
No one will if there's no receiving agency, so.
Simply budgeted.
Just budgeted.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I just want to comment on, there's some new groups in here, or some recent groups that we've started to give to. In any political or social function I've ever been to in this county or in the state, we're very well-received and appreciated, and I think this college is known for that. And I just wanted to comment that this administration seems to have done that well also, so thank you.
Well, for everyone that's happy, there's probably someone that's disappointed because we get a lot of requests and...
I could find it too.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next two recommendations have to do with the college's Board Counsel and Financial Advisor. These are reappointments of Gilmore and Bell, Gilmore Bell, to serve as Bond Counsel and the college, to the college, and Piper Jaffrey to serve as the Financial Advisor to the college. It should be noted that fees for serving as Bond Counsel and Financial Advisor are payable only upon the closing of financing. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Gilmore Bell as Bond Counsel for the fiscal year 2018-2019, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a second by Cross. Thank you, Trustee Musel. Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
As it relates to the Financial Advisor, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Piper Jaffrey as Financial Advisor for the fiscal year 2018-2019, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Trustee Musel?
I just, I've raised this before, and I do think it's important. These two entities are well-known in the community, have done a very fine job with the college, know the college inside and out, but at some period, either an RFQ for that or at least a documentation justification of continuation should be done, simply, I mean partly to see if there's something we're missing and partly to keep them on their toes. So I'm not, I don't say that with any quarrel with either one of them. I think they're both fine, and I've worked with them outside the college, but I think we ought to at least figure out if there's a schedule we ought to use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I would just echo Trustee Musel's comments and support that as well.
I concur.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on, Rachel Learz reported to the college administration that the college administration has worked with the college's financial advisors on an opportunity to prepay the final maturity of Series 2009 Certificates of Participation or Bonds. These bonds were issued to finance construction of the college's Olafah Health Education Center, or OHEC. The October 1, 2018, prepayment of $1,685,000, maturity date of October 1, 2019, is estimated to save the college approximately $15,000, I'm sorry, $50,000 in net interest savings in the college's general fund. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the form of resolution authorizing the redemption of the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation at the prepayment amount of $1,685,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just make a comment before we vote that I really appreciate the staff, Rachel and others, that, and with our, with our Bond Counsel and with our other financial advisors to bring these forward, because if we're, if we're capable of and we know of that prepayment, $50,000 is serious savings. So thank you to the Management Committee and to the team for bringing that forward. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final five recommendations that we will present tonight are based on requests for proposals or RFPs and bids. Our next is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for network, infrastructure, equipment, and services with CDW Government LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,011,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? It's a lot of money. I've seen the detailed reports, Tom, that you give a lot on our digital infrastructure and work, and it's impressive. And appreciate, appreciate the good work we do here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next was the renewal of annual contracts for beverages. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract of beverages with Pepsi Beverages Company at an annual expenditure not to exceed $230,000, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Trustee Snyder would not second it because he's a Coke, he's a Coca-Cola.
Coke paid for part of my education, and I still prefer it to this day, but I support this.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The renewal of the annual contract for Leadership Development Training Program was next, and therefore it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for the Leadership Development Training Program with Living as a Leader at a total expenditure not to exceed $115,000, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and as I recall, Trustee Lindstrom, this is kind of the second year of the program. We had extensive discussion about this a few months ago, and so I appreciate that we're moving forward.
This is a continuation. Karen, did you have anything you want?
Yeah, this will be, we'll go through this year and actually one month into the next fiscal year to get the first 52 people through.
Good.
And Trustee Ingram's going through it, so we can, we're getting feedback.
We'll have a firsthand board.
Further questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next bid is for interior LED lighting upgrades, and therefore it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $105,900, I'm sorry, $105,097.61 from SFSG Electric, plus an additional $10,509 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen cost for a total expenditure not to exceed $115,606.61 for interior LED lighting upgrades, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final recommendation is an annual contract for PCSC System Software and Hardware Support and Service. This is the system that enables the college door access system, and therefore it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal of Honeywell Incorporated for the establishment of an annual contract for PCSC System Software and Hardware Support and Service in an amount not to exceed $163,500, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before I conclude, I would invite Trustee Musil or Trustee Snyder if they have any comments or anything to add regarding the management. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. In a week when you've traveled to the East Coast to pay final tribute to your mother and sympathy is with you, you had a very extensive report and thank you for that detail. Appreciate it very much. President's Recommendations for Action, Treasurer's Report, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I get so engrossed in the reports that I need the time to report my recommendations for action. It is the Treasurer's Report that the Board Packet contains the Treasurer's Report for the month ended April 30th, 2018. Some items of note include page one of the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. April was the 10th month of the college's 2017-18 fiscal year. College's unencumbered cash balance as of April 30th in all funds was 105.9 million, which is approximately $16 million higher than at the same time last year. Fenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration, Mr. Chair, that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended April 30th, 2018, subject to audit.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
As always, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Rachel Lear's and the administration for helping preparing these remarks, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Advisory Committees, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Briefly, I'd like to cover the advisory committees and also offer a recommendation for them. You all receive Supplement B here, which contains over 50 different advisory committees. These play a very important role on our campus as they, as they advise our programs and tries to maintain a degree of relevance in what they offer. So, it's a great way to get folks in the community involved as well as keeping our programs up to speed. The members of these committees lend their expertise and dedication to help plan our educational experiences for our students and to assist in college, the college in articulating its programs with the community. The committee can als, the committees can also be integral to fundraising and job placement. We're very fortunate Johnson County to have outstanding advisory committees. So, it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the advisory committees contained in Supplement B from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th of 2019.
Second, or so moved.
Second.
Cross moves and Musil seconds. Where'd you get Lindstrom?
Lindstrom.
Okay. Any discussion? Again, I, I would just echo Dr. Sobchak, the tremendous support we get from the community of people willing to serve on these advisory committees and the effort it takes by staff to coordinate and listen and hear and try and shift the aircraft carrier of each department as it relates to the advisory committee recommendations. So, it is a, is a real blessing to this college and community that we have so many dedicated people. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I certainly don't want to be the one to slow the pace of this meeting down. So, I will continue this accelerated rate that we have going. First of all, I have a little bit of potpourri, a little bit of this and that for you this evening. You've received your report to the board. It's outstanding. It's really kind of exciting when you look what's in this thing. Several programs reported the number of their graduates, some of the things they're doing. It's a wonderful report. I'd like to thank everyone throughout the college who has a role in putting that together. I would like to make an announcement tonight. I'd like to congratulate the Croatian National World Cup Soccer Team for their 3-0 victory over Argentina. Dobro, dobro, življe, rvačka. That's Croatian, and I know my dad, who is a religious watcher of this program, will get a big kick out of it. So, thank you very much.
He's gonna have a hot dog.
I'd also, I'd also like to promote the falsettos. Officer Roval's son, Jason, Robin, I'm sorry, Robin, is featured in this performance. It's down at the Arts Asylum, 1,000 East, 9th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. It'll run through June 24th. So, I hope, how's it going, Dan? Pretty good show so far?
Very much, yeah.
Yeah, how's your son doing?
He's doing good.
Good. Does he have an agent yet?
Start.
Does he have an agent?
Yeah, he does.
Excellent, excellent.
Trustee Musil could do it if not.
That's terrific. Thanks, Dan. The summer semester is now in full swing. I'd like to share with some things that are going on around campus. It's become quite evident that our faculty, counselors, and staff made a concerted effort toward the summer enrollment because it shows. Our credit hour enrollment is up point three percent. That's a great job. This semester, in the summer, we have 8,417 students taking classes here on our campus, and that's terrific. Here are some interesting developments in enrollment when you look versus a year ago. Our overall enrollment is up 117 credit hours. Our readmissions and new transfers are also up by 67 students. Our online courses continue to grow, and those are up 860 credit hours versus a year ago. Our online course delivery now represents 47.7 percent of our summer credit hours. We have, and we have fewer high school students and students over the age of 25 enrolled, and that pretty much is reflective of a national trend. So, great job to enrollment services and everyone else, faculty, for putting these wonderful course offerings together. So, while the demand for online courses continue to grow, we know that there are two areas of study that are predominantly for face-to-face classrooms, Fine Arts and Career and Technology. If you haven't seen the physical changes on our campus these past weeks, I'm sure you'll enjoy watching the time-lapse videos of the building's progress for the Career and Technology Center and the Fine Arts and Design Studios. Both buildings will be completed in the, in early 2019, designed to provide our students and faculty with industry-standard equipment, emerging technology, and flexible collaboration space. So, and look for even more activity as Phase 2 of the Facilities Master Plan kicks into gear on campus during the upcoming months. Besides the Facilities Master Plan, there are many other improvements and enhancements on campus. We're completing six additional active learning classrooms, replacing roofs, power spraying, and repairing our parking garages, replacing carpety, carpeting, painting faculty offices, remodeling restrooms and more, with over 30 summer projects overseen by campus services. It's my hope that you and our students will share in the excitement of the many transformations on our campus as we approach the new 2018-19 school year. You know, during the course of the year, a lot of letters come into the president's office, letters and emails. I'd like to share one with you that we just got this week, and I'm just going to read a few passages from this. During those years, and this individual talks about his interactions with the college, "I was well aware of the high-quality education the college offered to the young and older members of our community. This year, however, I gained even greater insight into the quality of education at Johnson County Community College as my son attended two semesters there. I want you and all of the trustees to know how pleased he was with both the courses and the instructors. The instructors took a personal interest in his progress and frequently complimented him on his performance. This was something totally new to him, something that had not occurred at, blank, a mammoth impersonal institution, out-of-state, out-of-state institution. Because of the interest the faculty took in him, he was encouraged to excel in each course, which as a matter of fact, he did. As he now goes on to a larger state school, all of the encouragement he received at Johnson County undoubtedly will help him to succeed there also. And the education he received at Johnson County undoubtedly will remain invaluable as he pursues an undergraduate degree and goes on to graduate school." While these types of letters come into the president's office, they're often, they often reflect the incredible work that's done across campus. So, I just want to thank you for making this possible, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. We've just completed the, the members of the ACCT have just completed the evaluation of our CEO and the board itself, and one of our key values is advocacy, being an advocate of the community college movement across the country. I've said this before and I will say it again, and I'll probably say it every month. The detail in the president's report, the addendum you have in your materials, is, is just full of nuggets that we as trustees can use to be advocates of this college and the community. And I would ask you again to, just as we've pushed at the national level, it's important to be an advocate at Washington for our national issues, but what about every day at home for your college? And I've been trying to push that with a little listening, I guess, but in any event, I would say to us at this college, use that president's report as, as really good information as you're visiting in the community. It's, it's terrific information and I thank you for that report. I don't believe we have any old business, but we do have some new business. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I'm going to read a statement regarding faculty continuing contracts. This is in regard to negotiations. "As you are aware, the Board of Trustees and the Faculty Association have not reached agreement on an updated master agreement, and negotiations remain open. This month, our Human Resources and Payroll Departments are working to transition all current faculty, counselors, and librarians employed under a 2017-2018 Contract for Professional Employment into the 2018-2019 academic year. In line with state statutes, these 2017-2018 contracts for professional employment will continue for the 18-19 academic year, and the current 2015-2018 master agreement will be recognized as continuing for the upcoming academic year. Terms and conditions of employment that have not naturally expired under these continuing contracts will remain in full force and effect. And so, full-time faculty, counselors, and librarians will automatically receive the applicable salary step increase, if any, as outlined in the 17-18 instructional salary schedule, based on length of contract, years of experience, and education, and this transition does not require a board vote. Recognition of these continuing contracts will continue until, one, the Board and the Faculty Association approve an updated master agreement, or, two, the negotiations process as described in the Kansas statutes, including the impasse resolution process, is fully completed, at which time the Board may enter into a unilateral contract with the Faculty Association. Terms and conditions that contractually expire under the continuing contracts will not carry over to the 18-19 academic year, including the Joint Standing Workload Committee, the Retirement Incentive Program, and Early Notification Program, and the percentage salary increases under the instructional salary schedules and the overload and summer pay schedules. All of this is informational only as this process happens automatically. If you have any questions specific to the continuing contracts at this time, Dr. Larson, Becky Sentlever are prepared to respond. Thank you."
Thank you. Any questions? Reports from Board Liaisons, Faculty Association, Dr. Harvey. Kind of a lead-in is that.
Very serious lead-in. Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about what faculty are doing this summer. They're doing all sorts of things. In fact, it's really hard to get a meeting together if you want to get a few together, there, because people are everywhere working on things.
On campus?
Yes, and off-campus, and all over the world, really. We have faculty teaching courses, of course, and in the summer, that can be intense for the students and the faculty because it goes twice as fast. So, you thought that class was hard at normal speed, guess what? We're going twice as fast. So, that can be a bit of a grind. There are also a lot of, I've read into faculty who are getting trained right now for Canvas migration because we've just switched over. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, I can answer your question.
Oh, what?
When you say twice as fast, what do you mean by that?
I mean, our normal semester is 16 weeks and summer is eight. So, if you meet four hours a week usually for class, lecture, and say three hours of lab, which is what one of my typical sections would meet for, then it would be eight hours of lecture and six hours of lab a week.
One week?
Yes. So, it's a lot. So, students typically don't take too many courses in the summer so they can really focus, but it, it goes quick. Yeah. So, right now, some of the faculty are getting trained on how to change their courses over to Canvas, how to migrate, how to use Canvas. I got some questions from others in the hallway today even about the gradebook and those sorts of things because I did switch over last semester because I didn't want to have to learn this summer. So, I'm, I'm already a semi, I'm, I'm adequate at using Canvas at this point. We've got faculty that are traveling, studying. A lot of people work on their discipline area in the summer, so it might be writing and reading, going to NEH workshops. I know Dennis Arjo went to a very intense two-week workshop where he had to read a huge stack of books, and it was on, it was a topic in philosophy, and he was the only community, community college faculty at this. Everyone else was from a research institution. It was incredibly demanding, but he came back with all sorts of ideas for his classes. So, faculty, the chairs are busy at work signing waivers and helping students, and I've got several requests for reference letters, so I know everyone else is getting reference letter requests. So, there's a lot of things going on in the summer. You might think there weren't, but there's quite a few things going on. One of the things that I participated in was a dragon boat race once again, and we have a Johnson County Community College team made of some faculty and staff, and it, we are in the community division of the Kansas City Dragon Boat Festival. And what a dragon boat is, is it's basically a small boat that has a dragon head and tail on it. There's a drum, there's a drummer that beats on the drum. There are, there's a total of 12 people in the boat. So, there's one person in the back that has an oar to steer the whole thing. And then, there are 10 people with, each have one oar, and you're rowing, and you have to row together. So, the key to this is not being the most athletic, having trained the longest. There's nothing like that, I don't think, for this community-level competition. But, we are successful. We've, we have won the last three years. So, I'm just going to show you what we win. So, we got this plate, and you can find them in the hallway outside Jim Lane's office. And we've, we've won, we won second place the first year that I helped participate, and then the last three years, we've won first place. And we had a team ask us, how do you keep winning? Like, what's your secret? And, because we're all different ages, and it's not like we have a bunch of 18-year-olds that are, you know, super buff. We, we're all different ages, and the key is really working together as a team. You work with the drum and you have to row together. And we'll see these teams that have, they look like they would be really good at this, and they're all like rowing madly crazy at different paces, and they don't go anywhere. Sometimes they tip over into Brush Creek. Not good. So, we had two goals. One was don't tip over, and the second was win. So, anyway, so I wanted to share that. Our team was Sheila Phillip, Jeff Anderson. Jeff, Sheila always beats the drum. She's the captain of our team. Jeff's the person who steers us, and we're, he's really good at it, and that's a pretty important job. We had Casey Buchanan, Misha Klingman, myself, Valerie Dorsey, Jared Anderson, Mark Cowardin, Alex Anderson, Darlene Hatcher, Brian Wright. And then, we have two folks that are associated friends that have helped us but are not employees at the, at the college, Chi Long Sia and Garrett Webb. So, that's been our, that was our team this year. So, I, I do want to talk a little bit about negotiations and about faculty, too. I love working at Johnson County Community College. I feel very supported by my colleagues here, and we have, I think we have a pretty great team. I was just thinking about this teamwork aspect of how we won this race. That was our total secret to all of the races we've won. And I think when everybody works together and feels valued and everyone understands the role and their contribution, I think that things go great. The big item on our list, of course, is negotiations at the moment. We have strong and continued support from our faculty for our team and the work that we've been doing and that we're going to continue doing. There were questions recently about whether or not we would take anything to our faculty for a vote at this time, and our faculty expect, just wanted to share, our faculty expect that we will bring a contract to them for a vote when we have completed our negotiations work. So, when our teams have reached an agreement, then we will take a contract to our faculty for approval, and that is their expectation of us. We do hope that we can work together to reach an agreement soon. We're not that far apart on the pieces we have left. So, I'm hoping we'll be able to take something to our faculty before long. I do want to talk a little bit about what it means to serve as a faculty member at Johnson County Community College. So, we are looked at by faculty of other institutions as, as leaders, and part of that is our rep- is our reputation here at this institution. We are stewards of some great resources, and I think we all recognize that. And those resources, one of our best is our people. So we're building some beautiful buildings, and that's very exciting, but they would just be buildings without all the people that do the work of the college. Our jobs as faculty have evolved in recent years quite a bit. Some of this is because of external expectations. You know, we live in an age of accountability, and some of that's unavoidable, some of it makes us better at what we do, but it is, it is a necessary thing. Our faculty have fully embraced each of these changes, and they've done it with our usual excellence that we bring to everything we do. And you could see that with the whole HLC process, that so much of what they came to inspect and look at that's in those reports was done by people in just countless hours that sometimes gets whittled down to a little blurb or a little line, or a piece of data. Some of the things that have been added to our list in recent years is program review. Program review has gone from once every 10 years, to once every five years, to once every three years, to every year. And programs won't review themselves. So, program review involves everybody in an area, is supposed to be involved, everybody in the area, setting goals, evaluating where they are, where they're going, what they want to accomplish, and it takes time. It's a lot of work. We do come up with some really cool things when we do that, and I think our programs are better for it, but it is a lot of work. And a lot of that falls all across campus, but our faculty feel a lot of that extra work. We participate in general education learning outcomes, and at one time, that was voluntary. There was a committee that was paid to collect data and work on that. But now, we all do that in every course that's a general ed course. And what that looks like at a college this big is coming up with a project that's sustainable, that you can get all of your faculty to participate in, in every section. That's every section taught by every adjunct every semester. And then, you have to administer your assessment project, collect the data, get together and reflect on the results of your data, and make decisions about improvements or changes that you want to make for your course based on that data. And that's part of the assessment cycle. And report it with the proper paperwork for the assessment office. So this is something that we all do now in all of our classes, and I think it does make us better at our jobs, but it is an additional thing that we didn't do. We weren't doing that when I first started here 10 years ago. All instructors now maintain a faculty portfolio, and it's on a five-year cycle, and I did mine last year. It seemed a little, it was a little reminiscent of when I applied for tenure at my last institution. So it's a lot of things that you compile to show that you've been doing your job, and you're also supposed to come up with a project or something you want to do in your classes and put that in your portfolio. We also, of course, develop classes and serve on equip committees, strategic planning initiatives. And of course, our faculty chairs are, we didn't used to have faculty chairs, and faculty chairs do a lot of work just to keep things going, and they assist students. They're sort of, when a student has a complaint, usually they go first to a faculty chair, and so they're solving problems for students all the time. The, I did want to tell you about one other thing. Am I going too long?
Go ahead.
Okay. So another thing that we do is, when you get, this is just an example, when you get a report from the grants office, like you did this last month, you see a lot of grants that the college gets for different things. And we're very fortunate to have a grants office here that helps with that. Our faculty, many of those grants come from faculty initiatives, where faculty have an idea and they put together a grant with the grant office, and then they carry out the work, which can be a huge amount of work. But they do this because it's going to address some sort of deficit or need on our campus. And I just wanted to give you one example of an incredible thing that some faculty have poured into recently on our campus. So last week, I was here every day from 8:30 to 5:30, participating in an NSF grant, the first part of it. It is a, let's see, the name is Community College Research in Education and Scholarly Teaching Initiative. And it is for STEM faculty. The PIs, the initiative directors that wrote, that applied for this grant, was Heather Seitz and Jeanne Vickers. And it is a three-year project, and we just, I'm part of the first cohort, because I teach chemistry, so this is for STEM faculty, and I applied. Our first cohort is myself, Doug Patterson, Kevin Cannell, Eve Blobom, Jamie Cunningham, and then we also have Brian Hurley from Blue River, part of MCC, Angela Consani from KCKCC, Elizabeth Casco from KCKCC, and Carrie Hale from Butler Community College. They're all part of a cohort with us. And the goals of this project, it's to train community college faculty in scientific teaching and designing educational research questions, supporting community college faculty to conduct research in their classrooms, and to publish and present the research outcomes to a wider audience. So what that means is basically, they want STEM faculty to do educational research in their classrooms and publish it. And the idea is that, especially community colleges, because we have the most diverse population of students. We have a population unlike four-year institutions. And right now, most of the research in how do students learn chemistry best is done at four-year institutions, at larger research universities, really. And so, that's the whole point of this. And we did this whole workshop where we came up with, what's a problem of yours, that your students have in learning your material that you want to address? And then, they helped us form our research questions. It was a very individualized workshop, there's a lot of thinking. And then, we researched, you know, what kind of data are we going to collect on our students when we try and make these changes in our classroom? And, so we just kind of went through the whole process. And we're part of this cohort, we'll be meeting monthly for the next two years, and there'll be another group next summer. And, so, anyway, I wanted to share that because the faculty are doing, it's, you know, you might think we're just teaching, but we're developing things for our students. We are making videos for our online classes. We're, we're doing so much more, and I just wanted to communicate that and share some of that, because I think it's hard when you're not hanging out with us every day, all day, because you're doing your own jobs. I think it's hard to realize what people do, and I'm not an anomaly. I'm just representative of, of the faculty at this institution.
Dr. Harvey, I have three reactions. Number one is, I really appreciate your detail of, from your perspective, as to the activity the faculty is involved with and engaged with, and so, I believe this is a great platform for you to promote and market the good work that the faculty does on these committees and these issues. Secondly, you referenced the grant work, and that's part of our consent agenda, but as I look through that grant list, and the number of people that are engaged and engulfed with our grant team is pretty impressive. And sometimes, we approve these things in consent agenda and/or by project, and it could be 500,000, 700,000. There's a lot of money involved in these grants that, as you've described, people put a lot of effort in to, and I appreciate that. And my third, my third reaction is that I don't believe any trustee on this board, at least as I visit with them, take lightly the work the faculty does every day to, to honor their students with their best performance. The letter from Mr. Lerner tonight is one indicative of that illustration. You mentioned your lab work, you mentioned your coursework. I, for one, hear stories time after time of parents who say, "My daughter, my son excelled at Johnson County Community College because of the personal attention they got." So, don't, don't ever think that we don't appreciate or take lightly that behind the scenes and all of that work that takes place. Did you have a comment, Dr. Sobchak? Trustee Lindstrom?
Thank you. I also feel the same way that Jerry just expressed regarding the faculty, but I have a question. How come there are no photographs or video of the dragon races?
Well, we have video and photographs. Actually, Jim Lane came, and he took some video of us, but we can share that with you. I didn't have it in time for tonight to have it projected, but we can definitely share that.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the outstanding representation of Johnson County Community College in the victory circle next to you.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
I'm sorry, trustee Musil?
Well, I'll just say that for two years, I didn't understand Dennis because he was a philosophy professor. And for the next two years, I won't understand you because you're a chemistry professor. We've got to get somebody that's more on my level.
What would, what, what field? What field do I need to recruit from?
Brian Wright, yeah, some, just a general political scientist.
Yeah, there was, there was no political science in that, that presentation, you're right.
Thank you, Mel.
Dr. Harvey, that was terrific, thank you. Perhaps we could get the heads of our negotiating teams in a dragon boat and put them on Brush Creek and see where we could go with that.
You know, it would be one of those, you better work together because, okay, I'm not even making this up, there was a dead opossum in Brush Creek. And so, we were like, we could not fall in. We fall in, I'm going home. That was kind of the consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
That was more than you wanted to know, wasn't it?
Thanks. Johnson County Research Triangle, trustee Lindstrom?
Was the opossum dead before or after?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The JSORT report will not be as lengthy as the management report. We have, the JSORT authority has not met since our last meeting on Monday, May 7th, where we met at KU Edwards Campus in Oval Park. At that, at our May trustee meeting, I provided that report from that meeting. Really, the only thing I have tonight is two months reporting on sales tax of Johnson County. April sales tax toward the JSORT authority is $1,311,177.35, which was actually down 3.84%. However, in May, it rebounded and was at just over $1,005,000, or up 5%. And for the year, we're up 2% in sales tax here in Johnson County. For more information on the Johnson County Triangle, I would recommend everyone go to jocotriangle.com and follow us on Facebook and Twitter. The next meeting of the Johnson County Education, Research Triangle is Monday, November 7th, 2018, at 7:30 a.m. The public is invited at K-State Olathe Campus, which is out in Olathe. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Any questions of trustee Lindstrom? Thank you. Next item is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. KACCt met June 1st and 2nd at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Trustees Musil and Ingram, trustee Ingram and I were at that meeting along with Dr. The agenda was to have Noah Brown present, but he had a family emergency and could not attend, but Brian Davidson took the whole block of time on Friday and talked about transparent leadership. He's the founder and president of Intrinsic Institute, Intrinsic Leadership, and Igniting the Greatness Within, so we spent an afternoon with him. We had a legislative update from our lobbyist, Ally Devine, then that eve, and then at the end of the afternoon, we had the graduation of the reports, I should say, from our Leadership Institute. You'll recall that KACCt implemented a Kansas Leadership Institute, trying to develop administrators within our own ranks as we dealt with presidential vacancies and vice presidential vacancies. And Karen, we had two folks, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, this past year, Susan Ryder completed the program, and Leslie Quinn completed the program from Student Services and Engagement, and Susan from our Finance Department.
Dr. Weber, you heard some of the remarks. I guess I'm always impressed with these folks that have come through, and I think now this is the third year we've done, the second or the third year. And the sincerity that the people have of this program compared to probably a university program they had in education, in leadership development, has been pretty impressive, and they develop quite a strong cohort. Any comments? You heard the presentations?
Yeah, I would just say, one of the neat things about the group is, one, it's easy for us to support because our folks get to see what's going on at community colleges across the rest of the state. But also, each of the participants is required to do a project related to their work that would be an area of consideration for other colleges within the state. So there's, there's a lot of takeaway to it. It's not just kind of collegiality, traveling the state, hanging out together. There's a lot of good feedback that comes from the work that they do, and so, it works too full, by the way.
Good. Thank you both. Yes, yes, go ahead.
Whenever we talk about this every year, I just want to make, make it clear that this leadership program reflects the hard work of Dr. Cook when he was Chair of the KACCt, he made it happen. And so, I think it's outstanding. It emulates a lot of what's going on throughout the country in other states. And so, Jerry, that was you, and I think everyone who takes that is very appreciative of it.
Well, there were a lot of people involved, but thank you very much. Saturday morning, we had a presentation of George Knox, who's president emeritus from Lubet Community College, is on the Higher Learning Commission team, and he gave an update on accreditation for community colleges, and a number of colleges have been going through that, of course, we're one of them. And then, the adjutant general of the National Guard made a presentation on National Guard scholarships. Dr. Weber and I visited about that, and there are a number of National Guardsmen in the state of Kansas who, interestingly, just need a pathway to get to college. And the National Guard has a tremendous amount of money available for scholarship funds, and our team is well aware of that, so that was very, very interesting. Blake Flanders of the Kansas Board of Regents gave an update on perspectives from the, from the Regents. Major discussion, of course, was the concurrent enrollment issue. That legislation failed, and I think in part because the colleges can't come to an agreement as to what the cost should be for, for tuition fees, so, and reimbursement from the state. So that will continue, I believe, but Blake was very, very promotional about certain job needs. He talked about the need for nurses in Kansas, and we just frankly have to get more students in the nursing program as far as community colleges go. And just really did a nice job talking about the importance of community colleges. We had election of officers, and I'm pleased to report that Nancy Ingram was elected Secretary of KACCt, and going forward, she will be the representative from Johnson County Community College as our official vote voter in representing the college, so we're pleased about that. Trustee Musil, Dr. Weber, any comments you have about KACCt?
I would just say, and I don't attend a lot of these unless they're relatively close, and I think you give an appreciation for people who, as they left on Saturday with their boxed lunch, they were looking at a six-and-a-half-hour drive back to Seward County, or to Dodge, or to Garden. And for all the differences, we talk a lot about our peer institutions, and they're really not the other community colleges and colleges, but a lot of the issues are the same. Recruiting and retaining students, recruiting and retaining faculty, pressures from taxpayers about what their mill levy ought to be, demand for new programs and online learning and alternative delivery, and all those things. So it's, I think it's very helpful to hear that at least every year or two from people that are in the same position we are. You'll hear people that have been on the board for 35 years or something. So, some of these other communities, it's pretty amazing how long people commit to their community college. And I'm glad, one of the things we talked about that I, that I think will be followed up on by the executive committee is the level of reserves of the organization, because there's no policy as to what level reserves there ought to be, and in my opinion, they're overly generous right now, given that every community college is feeling some pressure that we could cut back on those, on our contributions for a couple of years and still have a plenty healthy reserve for any contingency. So, I'm glad Nancy's secretary, she'll do a great job representing us, as Jerry will continue to do.
Thank you. Dr. Weber, anything?
I would just, yeah, just add that the president's meeting, there was discussion around the state funding formula, the, how much of community colleges' percentage is received for the total higher ed budget. Obviously, a lot of conversation around the concurrent enrollment. And then, to echo trustee Musil's comment that the community's questions or concerns about mill levy impact, and I think we're positioned pretty well in that there are, there are schools who are a significant part... a significant part of their enrollment comes from outside of their taxing district and a significant part of their general fund does. We, we've reflected to this group and others before that, that we receive just north of 60% of our general fund from local, but over 75% of our students come directly from Johnson County. And so we're, a lion's share of, of what we support goes directly to Johnson County residents.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next item is the foundation report. Trustee Snyder.
Thank you. The Foundation Annual Luncheon was held on May 22nd in the Colab. I believe all the trustees, or vast majority of the trustees and senior staff attended that long lunch with about 100 other community members that are engaged in our community and college. Foundation President Mary Birch updated everyone on some enchanted evening. I think we've reported here before, but David and Mary Zamorowski are going to be the Johnson Countings of the Year, and John and Christie Stewart's are, Stewart are chairing that, that gala. To date, nearly 400,000 in scholarships has been raised, so Mary is very optimistic that we're going to break all sorts of records this year, which is, which is great. On June 19th, the Executive Committee of the Foundation met also on campus. The primary goal of that meeting was to set and approve the operating budget for the forthcoming year and to line out a bunch of meeting dates, which we will get to, to everyone soon. And then, as the fiscal year comes to an end, the Foundation wanted to thank Dr. Weber and his team and financial aid with their help in ensuring that all the available scholarships got to students. That's much appreciated. And then also, I would like to thank Kate and the Foundation staff for making everything run so smoothly always. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's a time when we approve a number of routine issues with one vote. You have looked at those. Is there any item that any trustee would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
I have some questions about some of the grants, if I may.
Okay, we'll pull the grant, contract award out of the consent agenda. Any other items? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item, absent item A3.
Move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Grants, contracts, and awards, trustee Cross.
Page is that on? I'm sorry?
Page 73 to 75.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had some, a couple of quick questions about, I'm glad it came up in Dr. Harvey's report, but with respect to the Dollar General grants and a number of the other grants, who, who actually applies for those? That was a question I had, and I've had many times, but I wanted to ask tonight. Like, let's focus on the Dollar General grants. Who applies for those?
Melinda, if you could take the podium and respond to trustee Cross.
I don't mean to wander into the weeds, but I'm glad we get them. I just was dead curious how, how that happens.
The Dollar General grants go through continuing ed, specifically adult education. Janice Blansett, and they're reoccurring. They get them pretty much every year. It's not a, it's not for sure, but they've got them consistently each year.
I mean, there really are some serious and impressive grants there, and so, what, what percentage of them might come from faculty versus, I, we, when I was Chair of the Learning Quality Committee, we spent some time on this, or maybe it was in management. What percentage of the grants that we do apply for would come from faculty?
I can't give you a number right off the top of my head, but Mike, for example, on the National Science Foundation, the one that Dr. Harvey spoke about, the leads are always going to be faculty in those instances. Things like the Department of Labor, that's one of our large grants. That's led by faculty.
Department of Defense.
Mm-hmm. Department, PTAC is actually staff. That's through continuing education. So generally, it's going to be led by a faculty member unless it's going through continuing ed, and then that's, that's normally staff.
So when a faculty member does lead it, how does it occur logistically? And I'm not, I'm difficult, I'm just trying to understand the logistics of it. The faculty member has the idea and then lays it at your feet?
Well, it can happen one of two ways. Sometimes we see the opportunity and go to a faculty member or a chair or the dean and, and ask what the interest might be, and it starts that way. Or the faculty member comes to us with an idea that's been presented to them and wants to determine the feasibility of it.
The faculty contribution's not inconsequential?
Well, you mean how are they compensated for that?
No, no, it's fairly consequential. It's substantial, their contribution in this field, right?
In the grant, sorry? Yeah, it is. It depends, well, it depends on the grant. I mean, like, if it's, if it's on the continuing ed side, it's, it's normally run by staff. But if it's like NSF, Department of Labor, things like that, it can be, it's, it's the faculty member leading it. So yes, they are the principal investigator many times.
I was in California last week with my brother, who just graduated, graduate alum of the school, so I'm not sure he got his associate's. But he said he didn't want to serve on an aircraft carrier. He's in the Navy. He just graduated from the Navy Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, California. And I asked him, "Why didn't you ever want to be on an aircraft carrier?" And he says, "Because everybody's only concerned about their job. They can only focus on their job." And frankly, that's how the aircraft carrier works. But at this aircraft carrier, I can't think of a better example, frankly, where, and I, I really do make everybody mad when I say this, like, we're all in this together, like, it seems to me. So I think that your department and the success that we've had through grant writing is a great example of how we are all in this together, and I just wanted to thank you.
No, thank you. Well, we have great faculty and staff that do a great job with the grants, so if it weren't for them, you know, we wouldn't have anything to do, so we are very appreciative.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve item A3.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have two executive sessions tonight. The first executive session...
May I just say, Mr. Chairman, in case anybody in the Navy sees that, my brother said that to me. I may have misconstrued what he said. Just don't want any missiles coming in.
It's already been over, it's already in DOD.
So I would entertain a motion for the purpose of discussing an individual employee's performance pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to non-elected personnel. Would like to invite Joe Sobchak and Mary Nero to join us for this executive session. The session will start at 6:25 and will last for 60 minutes. Thank you. A, a motion to...
So moved. Second.
Musil and Cross. And we will start at 6:25. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are back in open session, and no action was taken from the executive session. We are going, I would like to entertain a motion to extend the first executive session for another 15-minute period, discussing an individual employee's performance pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to non-elected personnel. We'd like to invite Joe Sobchak to join us for this 15-minute session, and it will begin at 6:27. I would like a motion...
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'd like to clear the room, and we will go another 15 minutes.
No, later than.
7:25.
I said 7:27. We are back in open session. Out of executive session, no action was taken, but we do have an item of action to take at this time. Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of Trustees approve the college president's employment agreement as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I would now like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters exempt from the Kansas Open Meetings Act relating to privileged conversations with legal counsel and the attorney-client relationship and consultation with the board's bargaining representation in employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 15 minutes. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Mary Nero, Becky Sentelvier, Colleen Chandler, Gerb Singh, Jim Lane, Barbara Larson, Rachel Leers, Randy Weber, and Melody Rail to join us in this session. I would like a motion for such.
So moved.
Musil, and seconded by...
Second.
Lindstrom. We will start this session at 7:40 in two minutes, so to give you a chance to, who's not supposed to be in the room, to clear the room. It'll start at 7:40. We are back in open session. No action was taken. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session, extending this session for discussing matters exempt from the Kansas Open Meetings Act relating to privileged conversations with legal counsel and the attorney-client relationship and consultation with the board's bargaining representation in the employer-employee negotiations. Session will last 15 minutes. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Mary Nero, Becky Sentelvier, Colleen Chandler, Gerb Singh, Jim Lane, Barbara Larson, Rachel Leers, Randy Weber, and Melody Rail to join us. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Snyder, seconds. We'll start at 7:57 right now. We are back in open session. No action was taken in executive session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn the June board meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.